A very special good evening to everyone gathered here and listening or viewing this broadcast tonight, from the most resourceful and diverse constituency in Dominica, Roso North. The Honourable Prime Minister, Dr Roosevelt Skerritt, on his way, all the ministers present here this evening. At the head table, we have the Honourable Miriam Blanchard, Minister for Public Works and Boards, Honourable Levi Peter, Attorney General, Honourable Dr Kenneth Daru, Minister for Health and Environment, Honourable Reginald Austrie, Minister for Housing, Lands and Water Resource Management, and to all the government officials here this evening, party officials, supporters, ladies and gentlemen. I bid you a welcome to this important town hall meeting with those who have been entrusted with the leadership of our great nation. Development is an ongoing process that focuses on both people and infrastructure, and huge change in the lives of people as a whole. In this vast and vibrant constituency, we are privileged to be a part of this drive for real change, which has touched the lives of the overwhelming majority of the Dominican populace. I would like to welcome you to participate in this dialogue of the strategies and plans that should be considered in moving our constituency forward. While Rome was not built in a day, it surely did not fall from the sky. We must form meaningful partnerships with central governments in order to facilitate change within our district. Central government is just the vehicle to assist us in reaching our destination. We are the drivers, and on this talk, we embark on discussing plans for progress and to listen to the concerns of the Roso North constituents so that viable means to resolving our issues can be provided. We humbly seek the hands of the Almighty God, in whose caring, trusting and capable hands we place this evening's deliberations. In the true spirit of this great constituency, let us have an openly, honest, fair and materially responsible dialogue. And so I ask, can you feel it?
Honourable Miriam Blanchard, Minister for Public Works and Boards, is from the Roso North constituency. So welcome, honourable, to your presence.
I want to first recognise in our presence, my Cabinet colleagues at the head table, Honourable Austrie, Dr the Honourable Kenneth Daru, AG, Honourable Levi Peter, of course, our dear masses of ceremony Ambassador Julius Timothy, but also my colleagues in the audience, Honourable Saint Jean, Minister Tom, Honourable Dennis Charles, Honourable Watley Paul, Senator Jay-Zaio Benoit, who's here with us as well, other party executives, the wonderful people of Roso North, and the media, good evening. I want to extend two warm greetings to you, the residents of Portisville, Fokole, Tari Street, Stoffarm, Yampice, Belleville Wall, Lewisville, Mont Daniel, Gotham Village, Goodwill, Lower Goodwill, Upper Goodwill and Central One, evening. Oh, it is indeed a pleasure and a privilege to be here with you this evening to address you, the good people of the Roso North constituency. And I say to you a special welcome to each and every one of you to tonight's town hall meeting, which is one in a series of town hall meetings organised by your Labour Party Government to keep you informed of what it is we are doing and what we intend to do for you. I know from meeting many of you, you guys have been waiting for your own meeting. You are anxious to hear from us what are the accomplishments of your Labour Party Government. And importantly, you're looking forward to this opportunity to talk to us about some of your concerns. So ladies and gentlemen, tonight is dedicated to you, the people of Roso North constituency. Tonight is your night. And I want to say a special thank you as well for accepting the invitation of your Labour Party Government to come to meet with us. I am a resident of Roso North as well, so I'm excited to be here with you tonight. However, I am here to speak to you in my capacity as a Minister for Public Works and Boards. And I am here to share with you what are our plans as it relates to the development of infrastructure in Roso North and in the Roso area in general. So my brief conversation with you, we speak about the major projects in and around our constituency, the community road enhancement programme of your government, the beautification cleaning programme in Roso, which includes us by the way, and safety and security, but from the point of view of improved lighting, which falls under my ministry. So let's get moving very quickly, I don't want to take too much of your time. Let's speak about infrastructure. And I first want to mention the accomplishment of your Labour Party Government with the construction and commissioning of the New West Bridge. That project also included the reconstruction of St Johnson's Avenue, which is in our constituency. In order to do the re-establishment of that road, have you noticed the size of the river wall we have there to protect the people who live in that area? Ladies and gentlemen, me and Honourable Tom have had a discussion in Cabinet. He says the New West Bridge is his. No, it's not, it's ours. So I think we came to a compromise earlier today. We're going to say that we share it. Because I said to him and going to say to you tonight, if you walk on the West Bridge from the Roso Central area, where do you end up? I think the eyes have it, Honourable Tom, you're out of there. So, I want to say to you ladies and gentlemen that the new modern state-of-the-art bridge in the capital is a major piece of infrastructure, is a major investment of your government in our constituency. And I am sure that you know that, and that you also know how important that bridge is to every one of us here tonight and everyone who lives in the Roso North constituency. Roso is a central business. Our kids have to go to school in Roso, most of them. Some of us have to work in Roso. How do we get out of Roso and into Roso? For those of us who walk, we have to walk on the West Bridge to go into Roso. For those of us who drive may take another bridge, but to drive home, we may use that bridge. And I want you to accept that this is your bridge. This is a bridge in New York and City One C. And I want to ask you, like I did at the commissioning of the bridge, to protect it because it is yours. It doesn't belong to me as a Minister of Public Works or the Labour Party Government. It belongs to each and every one of you. And I want to challenge and encourage you tonight to protect it. Too often, we see the government investing in a piece of infrastructure that costs millions of dollars, as in the case of the West Bridge. Are we going to sit and let someone destroy it and we are noticing? No, I agree, absolutely not. So I encourage you to cherish it and to ensure and discourage people for vandalising something that is special to us, something that belongs to us. Also, we've noted a number of functions, that in 2014, your Labour Party Government came to you and explained to you what the vision was for Roso Enhancement, how we were going to transform Roso into a modern business centre. And one of the things I thought when I was writing my speech was, I will say thank you again to you, the people of Roso North, for being so patient while we built the New West Bridge, especially those people who lived in the proximity to the construction site. I know it was difficult, but I know you did it, and I know why you did it. You did it because you bought into the vision of your Labour Party Government. You understood that we were on the right track to transform the city of Roso, and you stood with us. And you know what that tells me about you? You are a forward-thinking people, just like your government. So congratulations to you. Phase two of Roso Enhancement is going to have two components. So we've had the West Bridge, which was part of ours. The next one, we're going to give to Honourable Tom, is going to be the construction of Southern River Bank Walls from the Easy Low Black Bridge all the way down to the market. Remember, our side protected already, so we can't rush them, eh? Now it's there too. So that's going to be the first phase. And what is it we expect that bridge to do? We expect that bridge to protect the residents on that bank from possible flooding, as well as the aesthetic appeal. How beautiful that area is going to look after that bridge is done. Ladies and gentlemen, the Honourable Prime Minister is here. The second phase of Roso Enhancement will include the rehabilitation of three streets in Roso. I'm sure you've all heard us speak about that before. Remember, we've already established that what goes on in Roso is important to every one of us. So in the rehabilitation of those streets, not only are we going to have nice smooth roads to drive on, those of us who walk in Roso are going to have nice sidewalks as well. And I don't know for you, but sometimes, you know, when you look up to the sky, the first thing you can see is those utility wires. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to have a modern city, and those are going to be a thing of the past. As we move forward, ladies and gentlemen, I want to assure you of something. I want to assure you that the designs for the rehabilitation of those three streets will not, and I want to repeat, will not be done prior to consultation with you, the people of Roso North, the people of Dominica. And the reason we are doing this is because your Labour Party Government is approaching the development of our country using what we call a participatory approach. We want you involved, because at the end of the day, we are doing this for... Or you're not sure who we're doing it for then? Voila. Since becoming the Minister of Public Works and Boards, there's something that I have noted I will share with you. I have seen the importance of dialogue in doing any programme at all. I have seen how important it is to bring stakeholders together, to learn from them, to understand their environment so they can share with us things that we do not see because we are not there. So for instance, the engineers are not in Roso. You walk in Roso, not the engineers who are designing for us. The people who live in those streets, on those streets for many years, are the ones who can say to us, oh, this is what happened when it rained heavily. Or this is what happened when we had a hurricane couple of years ago. And we want to include this. And you know why we want to include it? Because we've already given you a commitment that we are going to build back better than we did before. And ladies and gentlemen, have no doubt that the Roso Enhancement project will do exactly that. One of the things that is going to happen from any major project, and this one is no different, with any big project, money's being spent. When money's being spent, what happens? There are opportunities for employment. But for the people who may not get employed, so I may not be able to drive a truck, and I may not own a truck. So I may not be able to be trucking materials for that project. But maybe I don't cook well. So I may decide, you know what? I'm going to find out whether the people who are employed on that project want me to provide catering services for them. That's a fancy word, but it just means to bring lunch and they pay me for my lunch. We need to get into the mode people where we can look after ourselves. We're a talented people, and we can do it. We just have to make up our mind and work towards our goals and those objectives. So let's move a little closer to home. The design of the multi-purpose indoor sporting facility. Remember, your Labour Party Government promised this to you, ladies and gentlemen? Within the next few days, very soon, a contract to design that indoor multi-purpose facility is going to be signed. And do you know where that indoor sporting facility is going to be? And where is Stoffarm? And it's going to be fancy, you know. It's going to be a facility that's going to accommodate netball, basketball, volleyball, tennis courts, and an Olympic-sized swimming pool, ladies and gentlemen, coming to Dominica. So I say to all of you athletes in our midst, or those who are listening to me, and those in Roso North and the rest of the island, and I'm saying to you that that project is for you. You know, your Labour Party Government also gave $50,000 last year to the Lindo Park Committee. And what is that saying to us, ladies and gentlemen? Your Labour Government investing in sports because we know our young people are our future. We know that sports instills a sense of discipline, focus and commitment in the lives of our young people. This is yet another example of your Labour Party's government's commitment to the development of the young people of this constituency and of this country. And I think there's no doubt that our, of this government's commitment to our young people in Roso North. So let's move back on to Stoffarm. And Stoffarm being created to be yet another centre in Dominica for youth development and empowerment through sports and education. Okay, so let's get excited and more, let's not bother over distractions. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm excited about the new multi-purpose indoor sporting facility, are you? I can already imagine how this new facility is going to transform the area of Stoffarm. And I'm saying to you, the residents of Stoffarm and the neighbouring communities, this is an opportunity for you. Take it, embrace it, it is yours. You have enough time to start planning for it. But also in Stoffarm, we're not finished, you know. In February of this year, your government signed a contract with the Public Works Corporation for $3.17 million. And what is that project about? We're fixing the road. And why are we spending so much money to fix the road? Because you are important to us. The Dominica State College is also located at the top of that road. And our young people are important to us as well. Do not let them fool you and say this government doesn't care about our young people. I am giving you all of the facts tonight so you can speak with information and say to them, do not lie to me. We heard it, and you have seen the project going on, so you know what I'm saying to you is in fact the truth. And the one thing I want to point out as well, your government, we are planning what it is we are doing. So even if we've not signed the indoor sporting facility contract, we ensured before we signed the contract for the road that those designs were not going to meet our needs for today only. It was going to be suitable for the increase in vehicular traffic once that indoor sporting facility... Ladies and gentlemen, you're safe with us. We have your future in our hands, and we are taking care of you. Another major undertaking in the Roso North constituency is going to be the rehabilitation of Charles Avenue. Residents of Roso North, I know you have been waiting for the rehabilitation of Charles Avenue for a long time. On Tuesday, your Labour Party Government signed a contract for $3.05 million for the rehabilitation of Charles Avenue. Yet again, we stopped and we thought about the project to ensure that at the end of that project, it would also meet our needs for the future. It would meet the needs for the future being that we have the ongoing construction of the new national hospital. And we know we will have increased vehicular traffic, and we've ensured that our designs are consistent with the increasing traffic that we expect. Ladies and gentlemen, your Labour Party Government promised you a fiscal year 2016-17 budget that we will do the Charles Avenue. So what is this? This is yet another promise made and kept, ladies and gentlemen. The Honourable Prime Minister and Minister for Finance, Dr the Honourable Roosevelt Skerritt, in his fiscal year 2016-17 budgets address indicated that revenue collected from the new road maintenance levy would be used to keep and maintain our roads. And we also promised you in that budget that Charles Avenue would be financed from that levy. And we are keeping that promise. All of the money that's been collected so far from that levy will be used for Charles Avenue. But it's not enough. But the Deputy Minister of Finance says he has it under control. He will find other sources of revenue to ensure that our project is completed because he understands we need it and it is important to us. There's yet another flagship project, again of your Labour Party Government in the Roso North constituency. And that is the ongoing construction of the new national hospital, which will cost more than $100 million. That project is funded by one of this government's biggest allies, the government of the People's Republic of China. During a side visit today of the Cabinet, a delegation from Cabinet led by the Honourable Prime Minister, we were there to observe how quickly work was progressing. For me, what was more important for me was a presentation before, because maybe I can see the construction, so it wasn't so new for me. But there was a presentation before, and they gave us some statistics. 93 Dominicans are employed on that project. The Chinese contractor said to us, "To date, $5.6 million has been spent in Dominica." How can people say nothing is happening in Dominica? That money was spent on buying concrete, cement, paying labourers, buying sand, stone, paying truck drivers, heavy equipment operators. People, we have to think for ourselves, we have to look and we have to see what is happening. Your Labour Government is working for you. There's yet another project that I want to talk about. That project is, some may think it's a little small, but I thought it was impactful. And the reason that I thought so was, I was told the following day, I'm leaving Parliament in October, and I'm on my way home and I realised, oh, the contractor kept his commitment for me on Federation Drive. It was a small piece of road on Federation Drive that we rehabilitated. But when I heard, I immediately called the Prime Ministers, press people, and said, "People, come take some pictures, this is important." And I know that you, the people of Roso North, appreciate what it is we did for you. We spent over $200,000 on that project. And why didn't we do it? We listened to you, we knew it was important to you, and we decided to do it for you because we care about you and your safety and your comfort. So ladies and gentlemen, thank you for sharing that with us. Another smaller one that I want to talk about as well, as we're speaking of small impactful projects, was the Easy Low Black Bridge. We did some major enhancements to that bridge, coming up to the first. And we didn't too also recognise a hero of the soil, but we also did it for you, ladies and gentlemen. Many of you have to walk on that bridge. We replaced all of the slabs, as well as all of the railings, and even extended the railings. And for those of you who drive, we ensured that you had a nice smooth surface to drive on. Do you think we're not listening to you, ladies and gentlemen? We have your back, we are listening to you. But I have to share a joke with you, I cannot help but share this joke. When the Roso City Council was inaugurated, a gentleman came to me and he said to me, "I'm going to write to you, you know, about the Easy Low Black Bridge." I said, "No, you don't need to do that, that's a waste of your time." I had that under control. "No, no, no, I'm going to write it." I said, "No, no, no, seriously, I have it under control." Two weeks later, I get a letter sent to the Honourable Prime Minister, sent from his office for my attention. It's from the same individual saying to us, "You need to fix the bridge." That's weird, eh? I tell him I have it under control. And I read the letter and it said, there was one sentence that said, "All of deterioration in the road, in the bridge, is happening with unknowing to your Minister for Public Works and Boards." The very same letter came to me, addressed to me directly. But that one sentence was not in it. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm saying to you, your Labour Party Government was on that project long before anybody wrote to us, long before anybody spoke to us about that project. It was our initiative that we took because we are concerned about you. Do not be fooled. I am saying to you, I can remember the date and the date of that conversation. We did it because we wanted to do it to make you more comfortable. Okay, you have to move along quickly, I think I've run out of time. We have a community road enhancement project that I'm sure you've heard about. And I'm pleased to say to you that Roso North is included in that project. So we have Charles Avenue that has already started. We have a little street in Upper Goodwill called Downing Gap. There's a primary school located on that street. When I saw that street, I thought, uh-oh, the Prime Minister said, "We need to fix this street and we need to fix it now." There's a primary school, a lot of people are going on that road. And your government spent $133,000 to rehabilitate that street. Remember, we said we care about the youth, right? Isn't that proof that we care about the young people? Ladies and gentlemen, that work has received kudos. I have heard from parents of students going to that school. The school board has written to me to say thank you. Residents have called and said thank you to me. And all of the praise doesn't go just to your government. It also goes to a local contractor who's here with us tonight for doing an excellent job, and we should say congratulations to him as well. I want to assure you that we also have on the cards rehabilitation of other streets. Mr Karamro Street is on the cards as well, be assured of that. We also want to do the rehabilitation of Winston Lane by the service station going all the way down to the Catholic Church. We also want to do that section of Jolly Lane between the Federation Drive and Charles Avenue. And Upper Goodwill, yes, Mr Coosati, Margaret's Gap is also included on the cards. But don't be discouraged, people from other communities, Yampice, Fokole, we have you on the cards too. Even my road, I hope is on the cards as well. But be assured, we cannot do everything at once. We are going to do it in phases. Be assured, we will get to you. Just be patient, we are coming to you. There's one more assurance I want to give to you. Your Labour Party Government is interested in empowering its people. And one way we are doing this is to ensure that these projects are done by people from the respective communities. So those road projects, the smaller road projects, will go to... will go to contractors in the Roseau North constituency. We have a small project going on in Jolly Lane for just over 40,000 dollars, where someone came and said to the Honourable Prime Minister, "There was a risk of undermining of a home." And of course, your caring government has taken care of that. That project is currently ongoing. I want to move forward to the Roseau Beautification Programme run by my colleague, Honourable Tom. It's called a Roseau Beautification Programme. But, you know, it actually cleans areas within the Roseau North constituency. Centre Roma Back Road, from Centre Roma Road down to Barf Estate, they clean that area. The Link Road that was just done, they also keep that area nice and tidy. As well as under the cliff from Fokolé go back to the coal. So even if it's called Roseau, remember we're Roseau too, eh? Honourable Tom is also taking care of our area and we want to say a big thank you to him. But Honourable Tom obviously has people from Roseau Central. So what have we done? With the approval of the Minister of Finance, your Labour Party government has made available through the Roseau City Council just over 30,000 dollars. And what we're going to do with that is to have smaller programmes because we want you to create employment for our young people. And we want to do that cleanup exercise, to cut all the bush, clean all the drains so that when it rains, our houses don't flood. We want to bring that to Roseau North as well. So that money at the Roseau City Council is being done, I think it was Lucy, we have 10 people already working in the Fokolé area for the Fokolé Improvement Committee. We're going to work in Yampis as well. I'm waiting on the names. I got a report today so that we can start working very soon to employ some of our young people in the other communities of Roseau North to help us in that drive too, ensure that the place is nice and clean and looking beautiful like the natural of the Caribbean. So ladies and gentlemen, you realise your government doing its part. We have to ask ourselves, what are we going to do as well? So after these young people come and clean up, as he got us in front of our house, are we going to allow them to come back in two weeks and not pick up the plastic bag that's going to block the drain? I think we have a responsibility to ourselves, ladies and gentlemen, to keep our surroundings clean. And I want to encourage you to do so. Ladies and gentlemen, one of the last things that I want to talk about is keeping the area safe through ensuring that we have adequate lighting in some areas. A few months ago, I initiated the changing of street lights on part of Federation Drive to LEDs. LEDs are cheaper. They use less electricity. So we started changing some of them. And there's a gentleman who's sitting in the front who said to me the other day, "You know, Domlek changed my lights and I don't have to turn on my lights in the front of my house." I said, "But since when Domlek into charity? Your government did this for you?" It wasn't Domlek. It wasn't a gift. So what we have also done, we've asked Domlek to start in the Lower Goodwill area and do an assessment for us to indicate to us where it is that we need to put in additional lights. So ladies and gentlemen, I just want you to know, it wasn't just done in Goodwill, Upper Goodwill. We are going to come and do, or Domlek is going to advise me of an assessment that they've done so that we too can address some of your issues as it relates to darkness and having to walk in the night and not necessarily feeling safe. I include you too, darling, in Yampis. We'll come to you right after, I promise. I want to end my discussion by talking about the CBI that we hear so much about. And the reason I want to do that is twofold. One, as a trained economist, I know, I can see and I have read the importance of CBI programmes, not just to Dominica, but to a number of countries around the world. And I want to say to you that the CBI is one option being used by your government to finance major infrastructure and a number of social programmes. If the government wanted to do those anyway without the CBI, how do you think it was going to be done? All of us, you have to pay more taxes. You're right. Every one of us. And I don't know about you, I'm voting for the CBI. I'm not paying any more taxes if I don't have a choice. So because we understand the importance of the CBI, I want to encourage you because many of us here today either have been touched by the CBI programme, money from the CBI programme, if not us directly, our relatives, your mother, your father, your brother, your sister, your nan and your uncle. And because of that, I think it's important that we defend it as a way of protecting it because we see how important it is to us. And I know it's not coming easy. Dominica is considered the top CBI, having the top CBI programme right now. And ladies and gentlemen, you probably know that already. All of the praise goes to the Honourable Prime Minister, Dr. Roosevelt Skerritt. He will go away for a week and say to us, "He has to go to how many cities?" And I'm thinking, "After you fly for so many hours, how are you going to go to so many cities in so many days?" But you know what? He does it. And interestingly, you know, if he's in China, you know, 1 o'clock in the afternoon is 1 a.m. for him. But he's still texting us and telling us to do work. So he doesn't sleep then. But what does that say to us? That says not only does he realise this programme is important to his Labour Party government so we can help you, he's investing personally in this programme and through his hard work, effort and commitment to that programme and to you, we now have the best CBI programme in Dominica. I think we need to say a thank you to him, ladies and gentlemen. So I want to end by saying to you, and I hope you agree with me, we're voting CBI. I want to say to you as well, "Long live Dominica's CBI programme and may God bless Roosevelt Skerritt for that." Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
As I suspect all of you will be aware, the current objective or the focus of the opposition is the two bills that will be passed or certainly that will be tabled at Parliament next week or in the sitting that starts on Tuesday. Namely, I'm speaking here of the Registration of Electors Act and the Amendment and the House Assembly Amendment Act. You will all be aware that for a number of years now, the opposition have been making noises about electoral reform and have been complaining that they will not take part in any election in which identification cards are not being used and a number of other areas. The government has managed to get to the point where it is able to bring to Parliament bills to introduce the amendments or at least some of the amendments that they are seeking and certainly one which they have portrayed as being essential, without which our democracy would collapse, namely the introduction of identification cards. Ladies and gentlemen, the bills that are intended to be tabled at Parliament next week address identification cards and they address a number of other issues. For myself, I have not yet been able to understand what precisely is the objection of the opposition to the bills. Maybe they don't really want to go to Parliament and have to debate the bills and not be able to say anything sensible. So they have resorted to calling people, basically, to effectively prevent Parliament from taking place when it's due to commence next Tuesday. My role tonight is very shortly and obviously we don't have the time to go through these bills in detail. But I think it's essential to point out to you, those who are here, present in the hall tonight, and I must say to Roseau North that you have put on a massive, massive presence and you have your performance tonight by turning out in such large numbers is extremely commendable and I commend you for indicating such a show. I think the few words that I want to say, I think I want to try to just give you some idea, some context of these bills. As I've indicated, for some time now, there has been discussion and indeed we have had recommendations from regional as well as international bodies of various introductions or amendments we can make to our legislation. And ultimately, we've got to the point where we are introducing these two bills. I think it's essential for me to point out to all of us present and those listening, wherever they may be, in region or in the world, tonight, a few things. One, the Electoral Commission. You probably have all heard about the Electoral Commission. And in fact, in recent days, I've heard loud voices from members of the Electoral Commission claiming all sorts of things and claiming that the world is going to collapse tomorrow because the government is introducing these two bills. Ladies and gentlemen, that is complete and utter nonsense. Section 56 of the Constitution provides for the establishment of the Electoral Commission. That section provides that the President of the Commonwealth of Dominica will appoint the Chairman of the Commission and he will do so, or he or she, whoever happens to be the President at the time, will appoint a person as Chairman who the President, in their own deliberate judgement, deems to be the appropriate person to hold the position or the office of Chair. In addition to that, there are four other members of the Commission provided for in the Constitution. The Constitution provides at Section 56.1 that two of those members will be appointed by the President on the recommendation of the Prime Minister. And the remaining two members will be appointed by the President on the recommendation of the Leader of the Opposition. Ladies and gentlemen, I suspect that you're all better at arithmetic than me. So you will understand that two and two is an equal number. That is to say, the Prime Minister has the opportunity to nominate two people and the Leader of the Opposition has the opportunity to nominate two people. So they have an equal opportunity of nominating members to the Electoral Commission. The Chairperson, as I've indicated, is appointed by the President. It is therefore, or should be apparent to you, ladies and gentlemen, that the suggestion that has been put around for a number of years now, that somehow there is some inequality or some injustice insofar as the Electoral Commission is concerned, is completely untrue. It is obviously up to the people who have to nominate members of the Commission to nominate people who are not lazy and who are not going to simply take a nomination and not do any work. The other thing that I think I need to say to you in terms of context about the Electoral Commission is that Section 25 of the Act, which in this case is the Registration of Electors Act, provides for the Commission to pass, sorry, to make regulations for, basically for the conduct of elections. That is to say that the Commission is responsible largely for the whole electoral process. Bear in mind, I've indicated to you that two of those members are appointed by the Leader of the Opposition, two by the, not appointed, but recommended, by the Prime Minister. You would realise that it is the Commission that's responsible essentially for our electoral process. And you will be aware of the, obviously, the Electoral Office, the Chief Elections Officer and that structure that's in place to ensure that our elections take place in an orderly fashion. So I think that background is essential because what I would recommend is that you, in your own time, try to get the ability of the time, or make the time, to read the two critical pieces of legislation in relation to elections and our electoral process. Namely, the Registration of Electors Act, which is Chapter 203 of the Laws of Dominica and the House of Assembly Elections Act, which is Chapter 201 of the Dominica laws. Those can be accessed if you don't have hard copies, which most people obviously will not have. But you can access those via the internet. And I suspect most people here have access to the internet, whether by your phone, by a tablet, or by some other computer or electronic device. And you can simply access that by, I believe, going to www.dominica.gov.fm. When that opens up onto the homepage for the Dominica government website, you click on the Laws tab and that will take you to a tab where you can get all or most of the laws of Dominica. And if you simply tap in one word from the title of the relevant piece of legislation, the act will come up and you will have access and can read it in your own time. And if you have printing facilities, of course, you can print it off and read it. So, in substance, the electoral process. You obviously have to be registered to take part in the election. I'm just going to try and run through this very quickly. Section 4 of the Registration of Electors Act provides for who is entitled to be registered. And essentially, it is very, very simple. Section 4 provides as follows. Subject to this act, a person is entitled to vote as an elector at an election if on polling day he is qualified to be an elector in the register for that polling district and is on that day registered in the register of electors to be used at that election. So that, ladies and gentlemen, makes it clear that anybody who is qualified and is in the register of electors for a particular polling district is entitled to vote on that day. That is an important point to bear in mind because it is protecting the entitlement of people to vote, the constitutional entitlement. And some would wish to disenfranchise people from their right to vote. And so it is essential to bear that in mind. So what are the qualifications to vote? Section 5 of the Constitution provides, and I'm skimming through it here, that essentially, a person who is a citizen of the Commonwealth of Dominica or a person who is a Commonwealth citizen and who has resided in Dominica for a period of 12 months immediately before the qualifying date. And C, a person who is 18 years of age or over. And D, a person who has resided in that polling district for a continuous period of at least three months immediately preceding the date of their registration. So, ladies and gentlemen, that is important to recognise. You have to be living for a period of three months prior to the date of your registration. Of course, people will move around so they may not necessarily be living in that polling district after the date that they have registered. And the Constitution, sorry, the Act, which is the Registration of Electors Act, provides for that. Subsection 3 provides, where a person who is registered as an elector for a polling district has ceased to reside in that polling district, he shall not, on that account, cease to be qualified to be registered as an elector for that polling district until he has become qualified to be registered as an elector for another polling district. Ladies and gentlemen, that is a protection of the right of each and every elector to vote. That is to say, even if an elector, once registered in a particular polling district, is not continuing to reside in that district, he or she is still entitled to vote unless and until they have become registered in another polling district or if they are disqualified for some reason, which is set out in another section of the Act. And Section 6 of the Act provides for disqualification. Section 7 emphasizes or reemphasizes what I have said, which is the right to remain. Section 6, you can probably look at in your own time. But Section 7, the right to remain registered states as follows. "A person registered pursuant to this part shall remain registered unless and until his name is deleted from the register because (a) he has died, (b) an objection to his registration has been allowed, (c) he has been absent from Dominica for a period exceeding five years, or (d) he has become disqualified for registration as an elector under this Act or any other written law imposing disqualification for registration as an elector." Ladies and gentlemen, as I've indicated, what that means is, once registered, a person remains registered unless and until essentially, he becomes disqualified, if that occurs, by one of the events that I have referred to and which are set out clearly in Section 6 of the Act. So, that in a nutshell is the registration aspect. But I think it's essential for me to deal with the issue of cleansing of the list because that's one of the issues that we hear a lot of talk about. We hear that the list... We hear that the list is bloated, and we hear that there are people on the list who are dead, there are people on the list who have been living abroad in contravention of the Act and other things. Clearly, ladies and gentlemen, you will realise that even if you cleaned the list this morning, somebody would probably have died between this morning and this evening, or between this morning and tomorrow, between this morning and the weekend, between this morning and next weekend. So of course, the idea of cleansing a list, to use the language that those who wish to take the government's task to use it, is an ongoing process. And at any given time, there will be people on the list who, for one reason or another, ought not to be there. What is interesting is I have not heard, maybe you may have heard, ladies and gentlemen, but I have not heard, and I certainly have not seen, any evidence of anybody who has voted in any of our elections who is not entitled to vote. I cannot say that it hasn't happened, but I haven't seen, nor have presented to me, any evidence of it occurring. I've heard stories of it allegedly occurring, but I would imagine, if it was occurring as frequently as is being suggested, that it should not be difficult for those who claim that it's happening to provide the evidence of it. So, just to make this point, that the Act provides for the Chief Elections Officer, otherwise known as the Chief Registering Officer, to take certain actions to ensure that there is an ongoing list which is up to date and which has on it only people who are entitled, according to law, to exercise their franchise and to vote in any election. However, as a matter of common sense, apart from anything else, one would recognise that the Chief Elections Officer is located at a particular location. He or she will have available to him or her a limited amount of resources in terms of personnel and other material. What I would do, if I was a person who was very concerned, as some profess to be, about the people who are on the list who I claim ought not to be there, is that I would ensure, particularly if I was part of a political party that felt that I was being disadvantaged by this so-called bloated list, I would ensure that as a priority, my party organised itself so as to make sure that in each and every constituency, we took a note of those people who died during any period, and I would probably do it on a quarterly basis. Each of the major parties send candidates in all twenty-one constituencies, so I would imagine that there is a party machine in operation in all of those constituencies, and if there isn't, it is the responsibility of the party to do so. So it ought not to be difficult, particularly in a relatively small society like ours, to know who died in each and every one of those small communities that we live in. And therefore, at the end of any week, at the end of any month, at the end of any quarter, at the end of any year, to have a list of the people who have died, and to be able to present that list to the Chief Elections Officer, and to say, sir, madam, these are people who have died within constituency A or within polling district B during the period X to Y, and we would like you to remove them from the list. As far as I am understanding, that is not something that has occurred with any great degree in Dominica. Indeed, there has been, it has been reported by outside experts who have visited Dominica, that, and this happened fairly recently, even during the period that they visited, which was a period of about a week, just short of a week, which was a period in which there was, list was published, inviting people, if they had objections, to people on the list, to make those objections. And the point was made that during that period, these experts who were here to assist us, that's the country of Dominica, with our electoral process, were not aware of a single objection being made to any name on that list. Ladies and gentlemen, that indicates to me that in reality, there is not a problem that some of our fellow citizens claim, and really, that is just an excuse that is being used by Dominica. Those who may be particularly interested could look at section eleven of the Registration of Electors Act, which is chapter two zero three, which provides for the Chief Registering Officer to cause to be prepared and published, not later than the thirtieth of September in every year, a preliminary register of electors for each polling district of persons who are entitled to vote at any election. And it sets out there the responsibilities of the Chief Registering Officer. It also goes on to set out the people who cannot be there, cannot be registered, who are in the category that I've already referred to, dead, absent from Dominica for periods in excess of five years, and so forth. So, ladies and gentlemen, that's just to indicate that I would strongly argue that the claim that somehow particular parties are disadvantaged because there are people on the list who should not be there is really a smokescreen, is a completely bogus argument, and you should not allow yourselves to be led astray by it. Ladies and gentlemen, the issue of identification cards. Section nineteen of the Registration of Electors Act, as it now stands, until, if it is amended by the amendment which is proposed, provides that the Chief Registering Officer may cause identification cards containing prescribed information to be issued in accordance with the regulations, or may employ other suitable methods of preventing electors from voting more than once at the same election. That is to say that there is the option, under the existing legislation, for the use of identification cards or an alternative means of preventing a person from voting twice. So the essential purpose of whether it's a card or whether it's an alternative means is to ensure that a person votes only once. You will recall that over a number of years, there was a hoopla, a lot of view and cry about the absence of identification cards. We all have different views about it, and I will tell you as someone who lived in the United Kingdom for a number of years, that the United Kingdom, within sixty-three or sixty-five million, depending on who you listen to, population, doesn't have identification cards, but they have elections. And I don't know that, I don't hear too many people complaining and saying that elections in the United Kingdom are not free and fair. So, ladies and gentlemen, that I submit is clear evidence that identification cards are not an essential prerequisite to having free and fair elections. However, I'm not suggesting that I'm opposed to identification cards, I'm just making that point. And indeed, the government, taking on board the arguments, the suggestions from various sources, have taken steps to introduce a national identification card. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is a major plank of one of the pieces of legislation that will be tabled at the House at the upcoming sitting. The Registration of Electors Amendment Act twenty seventeen, which will be debated in the House, provides for section nineteen, which will repeal the existing section nineteen and take matters a bit further. It will cause a national identification card to be introduced with the prescribed information to be issued, and it will provide for other matters to ensure that the persons who engage in the electoral process are the persons who are registered and entitled to vote at the elections. And interestingly, in addition to the use of the identification card, which, if the bill is passed, will become the preeminent piece of documentation that will have to be produced to entitle someone to engage in the election, there are provisions to ensure that no one who should vote, who is entitled to vote, is disenfranchised, so that, for example, a person who has lost their identification card, or it has been destroyed, or in some other way, for some other genuine reason, they cannot produce it, provided the presiding officer is satisfied of that, and a number of other factors, including that the person is the person they claim to be, and including, if necessary, that the person's fingerprint information confirms their identity, and that, of course, at the end of all of that, the person undertakes or enters into an oath, which you'd have to swear an oath, that what they are saying is true, that person will be able to exercise their vote, and will ensure that their franchise right is protected. So, ladies and gentlemen, we have those matters which are all to do with registration. I think I should also make the point that there is a new introduction, or will be a new introduction, to the Act by way of the Registration of Electors Act, which is the provision for confirmation of registration. And that, I understand, is causing some challenge or difficulty to some members of our society. In a sense, all that is, is, if you imagine that you are registered in, let's say, Rosanov, now, and you decide, for whatever reason, to travel to Guadalupe, to the United States, the United Kingdom, other parts of Europe, wherever, and you remain there for work or for other purposes, for one, two, three, four years, six months, whatever the period may be, do you take the view that you should not be able to vote in Dominica? Ladies and gentlemen, in my view, you are a Dominican citizen, you are and should be entitled to vote. This provision simply provides, and makes it clear, provides in law, that a person who is on the register, so you are already there, you are registered, when you were registered, you were living in a polling district, you met all the requirements, provided you have not been out of Dominica for a period in excess of five years, you continue to remain to be entitled to vote. I believe, I'm going into the House, I'm preparing already for the House, Madam Speaker. I believe, ladies and gentlemen, that you are entitled and should continue to be entitled to vote. I believe that that, contrary to what has been suggested, that somehow that is an attack on democracy, I believe that that is bolstering democracy, that is ensuring that people can exercise their franchise, and that every citizen legitimately entitled has the opportunity, if they wish to exercise it, to engage in what is a very important process, which is the electoral process, to exercise the right to vote for this government, for a different government, or indeed, as some people do, to spoil your ballot if you choose to do so. I don't recommend that latter course, by the way. So, in terms of the registration process, ladies and gentlemen, I am satisfied, and the government is satisfied, that the changes that are proposed in these amendments are changes which clarify and better or improve the existing legislation. Indeed, under the headed objects and reasons which accompany all bills, it says this: This bill seeks to amend and improve the Registration of Electors Act, chapter two zero three, namely, the Act. So, ladies and gentlemen, I would say that insofar as the Registration of Electors Act is concerned, you can be confident that your government has no intention of disenfranchising anybody, of attacking the democratic process, of undermining the democratic process, or in any way acting in a manner that is inappropriate. And I can assure you that this government has not done so, and will not do so. If I turn briefly to the other piece of legislation, which is the House of Assembly Elections Amendment Act twenty seventeen, that contains a number of important provisions, but for the purpose of tonight, I will seek to really jump to clause seven of the bill, which deals with, it introduces three new sections, or it will introduce three new sections: section fifty-seven A, section fifty-seven B, and section fifty-seven C. Now, ladies and gentlemen, if you've been listening to talk shows and some of the other media, and indeed, and some of the blogs, if you've been reading them, you would have seen over recent days allegations against the government, and attacks upon the government, and attacks upon the Honourable Prime Minister, quite pernicious attacks, if I might say so, claiming, for example, that the Honourable Prime Minister and the government are seeking to legitimise or legalise bribery and treating, and other such silly accusations. Ladies and gentlemen, section fifty-five and section fifty-six of the House of Assembly Elections Act, which is found in chapter two zero one of the laws of Dominica, for those who want to take that reference and look it up either now or later. Section fifty-five deals with the offence of bribery, and section fifty-six deals with the offence of treating, and sets out, in quite convoluted terms, some might say, what is bribery. For the purposes of this exercise, I think I should read section fifty-five one, just to show you, for those who have not heard it or may not have come across it, the language that is employed and what the amendment is seeking to clarify. Section fifty-five, which, as I said a moment ago, deals with the offence of bribery, electoral offence of bribery, reads as follows: The following persons shall be deemed guilty of bribery within the meaning of this Act. A) Every person who directly or indirectly, by himself or by any other person on his behalf, gives, lends, or agrees to give or lend, or offers promises or promises to procure, or to endeavour to procure, any money or valuable consideration to or for any elector, or to or for any person on behalf of any elector, or to or for any other person, in order to induce any elector to vote or refrain from voting, or corruptly does any such act as mentioned above, on account of any elector having voted or refrained from voting at any election. You with me? You with me? I hope you haven't fallen asleep, I haven't lost it. So, since we all understand it so clearly, we can go home. So, ladies and gentlemen, I've heard lawyers who are not qualified, indeed, lawyers who are not qualified, have no qualification at all, expounding on what the law is. You can listen to them if you want, but I suggest that you should not listen to them, because they will lead you astray. The simple fact, ladies and gentlemen, is that the government, as a responsible government, has taken the decision, and indeed, has gone further than taken the decision, has taken steps, to amend the legislation to bring a level of clarity to the gobbledygook you may think that I just read. And so, section fifty-seven A of the Act, the amendment act that is proposed, sets out in clear terms certain activities or actions that will not be and cannot be bribery. For example, it says, section fifty-five or fifty-six shall not extend or be construed to extend to any money paid or agreed to be paid for or on account of any lawful expenses, lawful expenses incurred in good faith, ladies and gentlemen, in good faith, at or on the call of an election. Subsection two states, for the purposes of this section, lawful expenses include, so here's an explanation and definition, the payment of the agents, clerks, canvassers, and messengers of candidates, not of members of the government or candidates of the government or candidates of the Labour Party, but candidates, all candidates. That is to say, ladies and gentlemen, it is a common sense move. If you have candidates engaged in an election, there will be expenses that they necessarily must incur to engage in that electoral process. The idea that somebody, some busybody, for example, could decide, out of malice or otherwise, to go and take out a private prosecution, or indeed, seek to bring a prosecution against against a candidate of whatever party because he or she may have paid monies to an agent or clerk or otherwise, clearly, I think, most right-minded people would think, is not proper. And therefore, it is set not clearly that those activities do not fall within the parameters. The other provisions set out: "payments made for the use of any premises for a public meeting in furtherance of the candidates or any person for the purposes of promoting or procuring the election of a candidate; C) payments made in respect of postage, stationary, printing, advertising, the distribution of advertising material; and D) payments made in respect of public entertainment or the use of any public address system." So, ladies and gentlemen, I would imagine that nobody would query with the fact that a candidate should not be at risk of prosecution for expended monies as part of their electoral process on postage or stationary or printing, advertising material, and so forth. Now, the issue of entertainment is one which has led some to claim that there's something wrong with that. Now, those of you who follow politics around the world will be well aware that the provision of entertainment by individuals or parties involved in the electoral process is a common occurrence. It is well recognized and it is not in any way in contradiction or conflict with the law. If however, a party was to put on an entertainment exercise, and for example, to say, "It is on and it is there. If you come, you are supposed to be voting party X or party Y", then that may well be a different thing. But if a party puts on an entertainment performance for the pleasure of all citizens of whatever color or indeed, no color, then, ladies and gentlemen, that clearly is not an event that falls out of the legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You see, let us understand this. This meeting has been carried live. And while I know where you'd like to send Lennox Linton on his foolishness, but let us understand that we have people out there who listen to the debate and they're still a little confused. So I believe we have an obligation as a senior political party to try to explain the issues to the people listening. But, you see, in short, what Lennox Linton is trying to say is for an election campaign, there must be no motorcade, there must be no music, there must be no modern heritage, there must be no last by the road. Ladies and gentlemen, not even in funeral they have that because after funeral it's a happy hour. So how you can tell me that in Dominica, we love our power campaign, we love our rally, and Lennox Linton wants to call people to burn the country down because he don't want no music in campaign? Well, Lennox Linton can go merry-go-round if he feel like, but I know you, the people of Rosonov, want your music. You want that trip again. You want your modern heritage. And the Dominica Labour Party will give it to you when they can. So, that is what he is, he was trying to say, Lennox Linton, and I want to say. But you know, he's a right fellow, so I'm rather of saying it. But I want you to say. And that can never happen and it will never happen, never happen. So let me recognize the Prime Minister, members of the head table, all my friends from Rosonov. I see some of you in the audience, some of you who come to me regularly, looking for any assistance and so on. They say, "I was bi black, I said, 'No, I never bite you'. I never back behind you. All I do is show you love and to assist you like the true Dominica Labour Party, where we can and when we can." And some of you who walk with tears in your eyes when you leave my office, even if you leave empty-handed, you still leave with a smile on your face. Ladies and gentlemen. And that is the Dominica Labour Party. Now, if you notice, I had a little horse tonight. I almost didn't come to the meeting, but I couldn't miss Rosonov because Rosonov is very similar to my constituency. I have brought stuff to myself and I have got talagun, capuchin, and all that to the north. Like you, you have Roson to the south and all these other communities. And I want to say to you tonight that wherever you were born or where you were raised does not decide your destiny or where you will live or where you will die. Because certain circumstances put us in certain situations and that we have to deal with. The difference between us and them is we understand your situation and we try to get you out of that situation. And that is why it upsets me when politicians attempt to classify people as to where they're from, where their children from, and only come to them when they need them to do their dirty work for them. So they want to burn down the country, so Monday night, let's go to Fancole, let's go to Tarrishpit, let's go to Yampis, let's go to Gota. Because they give the impression that all the people from those communities are capable of, is causing problems and causing confusion. But I want to say to you, the people of Rosonov, that don't matter what your circumstances are, you still a man and a woman in this country. And you have a right to demand your fair dues from whatever anybody in this country getting. You deserve your stool in Rosonov, especially in Scott Farm, in Yampis, in Gota, and in Dominica. And that is why this government has put plans and programs in place to ensure that we can take care of you, the less fortunate in our country because you have one vote at every manjar. And while everyone to dismiss you today, when will the election come? They will come by in the day, they'll come in the night, they'll come in rain, they'll come in sun because they recognize the importance of your vote. But we, the Dominica Labour Party, will come to you like we here tonight to speak with you, to dialogue with you, and to see what we can do to bring better fortunes and to change your life around and to make you a community like any community in the country. And that is why this government have put programs in place to ensure that those of you here in areas like Yampis can be part of the process. And so all those programs you have put in place is issues like early childhood education. Why? Because? But I shouldn't say it like that. I know that as bad as things are, Yampis, Tyre God, have produced doctors, you have produced priests, you produce monks, you produce nurses, you produce maybe some of the best hairdressers and bear brothers in this country. So while things was rough, you didn't sit down on your behind and cry. You went out there, you toyed, and you gave your children an opportunity, the opportunity that you never had. And what is said as a government is we going to help you to realize your dream and realize your goals. And even if you didn't have it when you were growing up, but we rest assured that we will ensure that your children grow up in a different and a different environment. And that is why we ensuring that every single child from Rosonov gets an opportunity to go to school from the start. You will go to the school of Peter, early childhood school because we will ensure that no child who is capable of attending an early childhood institution will not go because they cannot afford to go. We will ensure that they put the resources in the institution to make sure that your children go. We will ensure that when your child passes the Common Entrance Exam, we will give them a transfer grant of $500 to ensure that you, the parent, can buy uniform and you can send your children to school. And we will ensure that when your children come to go to high school, well, some of them like to walk, so the transportation thing is not an issue. But you will not be denied access to Scarry College and they can say what they want. The Dominica State College is Scarry College. Because, well, I know he don't like me to say that because when Scarry was Minister of Education and he decided to establish the Dominica State College, so every child would have an opportunity to go to college, it was heavily opposed by the opposition. Today, we have moved the population of the college to almost 2,000 students somehow because we have made college education easy for you, the people of Rosonov and Dominica. And on top of that, those old containers on your new up there, we remove those containers and we give you a state-of-the-art building. That is why we call it the Usual Scarry College. And I want to say this. And I need to thank you, the wife of the Prime Minister, Melissa Scarry. Because she has been doing a wonderful job in ensuring that our students get a snack at school and our babies get pampers to put on them when they need it. And I can say that because I have already gotten pampers from Melissa Scarry for some of you, the single parents of Yampis, of Gota, of Fancole, and Tarrishpit. And I'm going to tell this. Don't feel bad about it. There is nothing to feel bad about because some of us make children and you're not quite ready for making children. And some of us have serious hard time in taking care of immature babies. And that is why we have gone one step further to ensure that any child under the age of three will benefit from the insurance program that we just put in place. Because we recognize that age is very vulnerable at that age. We recognize that children are being born with diseases that if they don't get immediate cure, they will die, ladies and gentlemen. And the opposition criticizes that because they see you, the people of Gota, Tarrishpit, and Yampis, more children must die in your hands and not ask for help from the Dominica Labour Party. That is their intention, ladies and gentlemen. And we have ensured that the people of Rosonov, once you're 60 years and over, you can go to the hospital and get free medical treatment. And that is the policy of the Dominica Labour Party. And if that's not happening, do not blame the government. You must blame those that have been staring at the program because our policy is very clear that once you're 60 years and over, you're entitled to free medical treatment at the hospital. And for those of you 18 years and over, the same thing applies. And for those of you, many of you near Rosonov, you have had situations where hadn't you gotten immediate and rapid relief, you would not be able to send your people overseas for care. And that is why they criticize the red clinic. But I can say to you that many lives have been saved because you were able to go to Scarry, go upstairs, and get assistance to take your people overseas for medical treatment. And that is why they want to burn down Rosonov because they do not want the Dominica Labour Party to help you and to support you, the people of Rosonov. And that is why we have established the Small Business Union. So you, the graders, I, and the minister will tell you that I have given applications for people from Rosonov to get support from the Small Business Union. Because if you're saying that we need to empower young people, we need to create the environment for them to empower themselves. So you benefiting from the support Small Business Union, so forth. And they criticizing NEP. They make you feel bad because you're working for NEP. But it is the same people that criticize your children for being on the bus, smoking marijuana, and getting into trouble. And the government has created an avenue where these young people can gainfully engage. But let's understand it too. That is not only public children that get a job from the NEP. Their children get it too. Their children get it too. Their families get it. But you know what? Those there in the bank because they go university. So they walk in the bank, go and look at the faces. Some of them are the eldest bank, the National Bank, Scotiabank. They're under the NEP too because they're being paid not by the bank, but by the government of Dominica. And in certain instances, the bank pay half and the government pay the other half. So don't let them banuse you at all because why do you come into the red clinic in the daytime? They're thinking about their own midnight. Because they don't want to see people, they don't want people to see them going in the red clinic. They're going to have fear cast behind him all because they're going behind him looking for help and say, "Scarry, go, 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 but I come to you. You can't ever see the people there." Let me tell you. Let me tell you. I used to lie a little bit before. But since I fixed my knee, I not lie a little. I stop lying. So, so what you say I telling you there is the perfect truth, ladies and gentlemen. And you know why? And they know it too because of our score Q95 and so they go, "Why Scarry?" And they put their red t-shirt on and they're blue. They're going to win it too. They're going to win. But they believe Scarry don't know them. But we know them. And some of them, they, oh, they're putting up plenty of them. Oh, wow. They're putting up plenty of them. So, ladies and gentlemen, it is the same government and you, the people of Portobello and Fancole, many of you are fishermen or the children of fishermen and your people went on sea for years and they retire and they have no social security. They have nothing to go on. And it's this government who decided that we will give you $300 every month because you have made a contribution to development of Dominica. Ladies and gentlemen, this government. And you know, I'll be honest with you. I was back before you went on to vote for Danny Luque. Well, well, okay, okay. So, okay. Not all of you, but some of you vote for Danny Luque. Are you gentle? Are you coming back home? Are you coming back home? You see, and you will admit that Danny Luque has been a complete failure, a disaster to the citizens and the people of Rosonov. A total shame on the people of Rosonov. Whether you're blue or you're red, you must admit that Danny Luque has failed you, the people of Rosonov. Because he has denied you and he continues to deny you opportunities that this Labour Party government can provide for you. Because, let's be honest, you guys talking to me when you come. You guys talking to me when you come that when you go to Danny Luque and you're asking for some support, he tell you things like, "But the island is for his family." I heard that from you, the people of Roswell. You cannot go to Danny Luque home. You cannot. How many, how many knows here? How many knows here? You cannot go to Danny Luque home. And I'll tell you what. We can have our problems as politicians. There was always politician. There was always labor and freedom and everybody else. But the people must never suffer because of our political differences. And, and you cannot fight with a government that in power. You cannot fight with our government. You, Danny Luque, unemployed, care of world. And you feel for your people to benefit. And you don't have no chance of being in government, okay? Because all of us will admit and they have admitted that this Dominican Labour Party would spend another fifteen years in government. And so, your responsibility is to your constituents. You must make representation on behalf of the constituents. You must go to Scary, bury a prey and tell Scary you have an elderly citizen who need to go to Matlin for treatment and you need some help for that citizen. You must ask the questions in Parliament about passport, about Susan Old. I mean, that is the question you're asking a Parliament when you are one of the most challenged constituencies in the country. And when you should be asking for road, for washroom, for light, for water, for education. You telling people they must come and demonstrate because you don't have no money for election. Because you have no music for election. And that is the most important thing you can think about when you are one of the most challenged constituencies in the country, the Roswell constituency. But it's you. It's you. It's you. You win, Danny win, we win sixty or seventy, I don't even know how much. So it's you. If you feel you want to vote for Danny, go ahead and vote for Danny. Ladies and gentlemen, you know, you know the problem with United workers' party. The problem that this party is two problem there. One, there is no leadership in that United workers' party. And you cannot have a government. You cannot have an opposition where everybody doing what they want. No leadership. Lennox said, "Don't go up the bridge, Isaac go." Now, now Lennox wanted to go. But Isaac telling not to go. It's not nonsense in Roswell constituency. And he and Isaac Baptist, the whole Friday was on Q ninety-five telling people not to go. He said, "Go up the bridge, the bridge is closed." I don't know who put the bridge in closed. The bridge is closed. The bridge will fall down. Don't know, don't know, don't know who tell you. Who tell you something? But, when Isaac see people in Roswell, Isaac grab a jacket on him. "One sleeve long sock, one sleeve short sock." So, while Lennox lived on, sitting in Montana there saying Isaac said not to go up the bridge, Mr. Isaac was the only man in the open with a jacket on him. The only man in the whole function, ten thousand people, the only man with a black jacket in the hot sock was Isaac. So really, this, that is the alternative you have to the Dominican Labour Party. Solid leadership, visionary leadership. Leadership that taking decisions, even when we criticizing at the end of the day is always in the best interest of the people of Dominican. And my voice will allow me to tell you some of the decisions that Roosevelt Scarry has taken and have been heavily criticized. That today, everybody saying, "Boy, Scarry, you should not do that all the time." When we move from Taiwan to China, those of you here heavily criticize, heavily criticize. What you what we get from Taiwan? And they still not get some money, they share it off on themselves. They give them some popo. Some popo. Now, and it, one thing, one thing. The pineapple sweet, but it are small. What we get from pineapple? That is what we get from Taiwan. Twenty-one years, that what we get from Taiwan. Ten years with the Chinese. Come to your finger and tell them, "One year, bottom, front of your chin." And it is always foolish for them. Um, they want from that, that make us lose the match on Sunday. If it wasn't for Mr., who would have won again? Who would have won cricket? But you know how it is already. But that is what we got from the relationship. And every Dominican is happy about what we getting. Our new hospital, our state college, our roads, our bridges, ladies and gentlemen. That is the decision made by Roosevelt Scarry for the Dominican Labour Party. But, ladies and gentlemen, in terms of housing, I want to say to you, the people of Roswell, that you are benefiting from our housing program. When I look at the records and it's not recent, I have the records for twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. We had already spent over two point five million dollars in the Roswell constituency on housing. I want to say to you that when we started this quarter regulation program, you, the people of Fancolé and Young Peas were the first beneficiaries of the dollar square foot land of Roosevelt Scarry. Be- because many of you didn't know where you were. For thirty years, you have been living on that land. Thirty, forty years. Your children, their children, you know, children, children, their children. And you had no opportunity to own that little piece of land. And the Workers' Party, Timothy Austin there, the Workers' Party was offering you that land. Timothy Austin did it. No, no, seriously. You know, no, seriously. You know Timothy and Edison was never getting along. Because every time Timothy acting Prime Minister and he made a decision, as soon as Edison come back, he overturned the decision. And that is why when the United Workers' Party, the only person that could have led the United Workers' Party at the time when Edison left was Julius Timothy. And they go and blow, you see what happened? They put sprags, you see what happened? They put running green just to cover Timothy. They kill you now with your pig. Edison killed the party so that Julius Timothy could not emerge as leader of the party. And you, the people of Roswell, you owe it to Timothy. You owe it to him for the representation, the sacrifices that Timothy owe for you, the people of Roswell. Okay? And so, United Workers' Party was giving the land at five dollars a square foot. That is what they wanted to sell. The precipice for you for. No infrastructure, no drainage, no toilet. Five dollars a square foot. And Roosevelt Scarry said, "Never happen, one dollar." And today, today, how many of you, I have this stats there? Over two hundred and sixty residents of Roswell have benefited from the dollar square foot land of Roosevelt Scarry. And what has that done for you? It has given you an opportunity to get your title and to send your children to school and to go to courts and to buy a city and to fix your home, ladies and gentlemen. That today, you from Roswell can work proudly with your certificate of title in your hand and your nice house in Roswell, ladies and gentlemen. But I'll tell you my problem. And all of you come to me for assistance. And I assist as many of you as I can. But we have to build back bigger and better. And I am not satisfied what the contractor is doing for you. I'm not satisfied the estimates you getting because some of you coming back two times and three times and four times. Because the estimate was not done properly. I want to promise with the permission of the Prime Minister tonight to prepare a comprehensive housing list for the Roswell constituency. We will send our technicians to do the assessment. So you'll get the proper assessment. If it's three window, it's three window. If it's ten galvanage, it's not five and a half galvanage. If it's two inch nail, it's not one inch nail. If it's five plywood, it's five plywood. If I give you three plywood, you're not ready, you'll come back to me. We will do a proper assessment and we will get good contractors. Because we want to ensure that Roswell is a shining example of government's program to take care of the less fortunate in our community. I want to make that mention. And ladies and gentlemen, I know land is an issue. And many single parents come to me and there's a minister trying to put a piece under my mother house and to put a piece on top of my mother house. That is cool, but that can be dangerous. And I don't like it. I tell you straight, I don't like it. I wish if you would find your own piece of land and the government will help you to build a house on your own piece of land. So you have your own title and you can go to your own bank and you can send your own children to school. Because teeth and tongue does get problem. If you bring a girlfriend upstairs and your mother don't like the boy, it's problem. If your mother don't like the girlfriend you bring, it's problem. And you're in the lady house, you have no strength in the lady house. Find your piece of land. If the government have land, we'll find it for you and we will assist you, especially the single parents, to build, to help you to construct your own decent home for you and your family. So, the people of Roswell, we promise the people of Silverlake that we're going to transform Silverlake. And the taller Silverlake cannot be transformed. The people are always, and how the people, the people, the people, the people. We says, "No, let's put some pride in the people of Silverlake." And today, if you go to Silverlake, you will see a different community in Silverlake. Today, if you go to Grand Bell, you will see a different human. And by the end of this year, if you go to Bellevue Showway, you will see a different Bellevue Showway. That is the power of the Dominican Labour Party. And if we tell you we can do it, we will do it. And if I tell you, the people of Roswell, we can transform your community, we can transform your lives, we can transform the life of your children, then the Labour Party can do it. Because we not telling you what we will do. We not tell you what we can do. We tell you what we already do is there for you to see. I believe, you, the people of Roswell, it's time politicians stop using you to our problem. It's time for politicians believe that our community is a hard tree for misbehavior and bad behavior. It's time politicians stop believing that it's only a bunch of. I believe, you see, I don't have to vote for Danny Luque, but I gladly vote for him. Because now you can see the mistake that you made in twenty forty. Now you can see the error you made electing Danny Luque as your parliamentary representative. And the time will soon come when you have to decide again who you want to lead you in battle. The time will come when you have to decide in whose hands you want to put the future of your children. The time will soon come when you have to decide what kind of role you want. What kind of daughter, what kind of young peas, what kind of stuffer, what kind of Fancolé, what kind of parish with you want. That choice, ladies and gentlemen, is in your hands. We offer it to you on the platform. It's yours to take it or leave it. And I want to say, not only for yourself, but for the sake of your children, you have to vote for the Dominican Labour Party. The only party. The only party that understand what you're doing. The only party that have a philosophy where all of us singing from the same book. UWP is not a political party. UWP is a bunch of men. It's like a cricket team. One from Jamaica, it in national. One from Dominican, it in ground. One from Saint Kitts, it in Araroot. You can't win because there is no unity. There is no unity of purpose. And that is UWP. Is a bunch of men with all their gripes that come together to move your teenager. The Dominican Labour Party is a solid party. Therefore, Libra was the same thing. Even Patrick, he fall on the wayside. But Patrick had the spirit of labor. But he lose, OJ. So another party is a party with a set philosophy. A philosophy of taking care of the less fortunate. A philosophy of taking care of the needy. A philosophy of putting shoes on the feet of the poor man. And that is what Roosevelt Scarry represents. The Labour Party of all, the Labour Party of today and the Labour Party of tomorrow. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. May God continue to bless you.
The fact that we here this evening means that the Dominican Labour Party administration, we continue to take our message to the road. And we have made a commitment that no corner of Dominican will be left out. So it is a pleasure to be here tonight. I know, I've heard that you've been waiting for a very, very long time. And I think the Roswell show them that this is the model of town hall meetings, the real town hall meetings. So we are here tonight to, of course, share the message with you, what we've been doing, your plans and of course more our plans, sorry. And of course, more importantly, to hear from you. Because we believe that you have to be included in the work of the government, your government. And as other speakers before me would have said, we do not come to you only when it's time for your votes. There are no elections inside from what I know. But we feel that we have to share the message of love, the Labour Party message with you. And also to give an opportunity to hear from you, to hear your commendations, first of all. Because I tell people, while we have to criticize and we have to point out the things that have to be done, it's also important that to encourage us to continue working for you and you also have to give us our props and to thank us for the little that have been done. And then you tell us, yes, this needs to be done. So we are here hoping that I said that when the opportunity comes in the next few minutes, that you will, of course, put forward your commendations, recommendations, etc. So I want to thank you for the very warm welcome that you gave me and the rest of the team when we came in tonight. And it's a pleasure to report to you briefly because it's never easy speaking after regional loss. I'm not sure why the PM changing order of, of the speeches. But also a lot easier speaking down the list because a lot of things that you would have wanted to say would have already been mentioned by the speakers before you, so there's an added advantage. But I said, my pleasure to report to you briefly on my stewardship as far as the Minister of Health and the Environment. And of course, to learn my thoughts and to see what you call it. and of course, to learn my thoughts on a few of the current trending topics today. Of course, you cannot speak of health and the environment today without speaking of a new national hospital which happens to be in the Rosonov constituency. A forty million US dollar, you can convert that to one hundred and eight million EC dollars gift. And I want to underscore the word gift from our friends from the People Republic of China. And people, this is not worth it. And before I go any further, I really would like to recognize the efforts of your former Member of Parliament who also happened to be the former Minister of Health, who started this whole process. So while the actual construction started under my watch, the Honorable Tim Murphy would have been the one who would have done a lot of the groundwork to set the pace for what we see happening in the end of it. And we really have to recognize him for that. So we want to thank our friends of the People Republic of China and this is very important. Again, the numbers because before me would have alluded to the fact that a lot of what we see happening today, what we take for granted, would be the result of the groundwork that would have been laid, especially at the question to forging foreign relations. And when, well, a decade or so ago, I think fifteen years ago, if I remember correctly, your administration led by the current Prime Minister, when he made this bold move to move away from Taiwan to the People's Republic of China, we heard all what in this year that to say. And Honorable Oshie said it in his own unique way, what is it that we gain from Taiwan? And then we can see what we have benefited thus far from China in just thirteen years relationship. And we can speak to a number of multimillion dollar projects, all of them concentrated within the Rosonov and the Roson Central constituency. Dominican Grammar School, the new State House, the Dominican State College, the Stadium, which just a few days ago, we witnessed a very thrilling match between the West Indies and Pakistan. And of course, Oshie described what happened in the end, it was rather unfortunate. But one, what all of us have to admit, it was a very enthralling five days of cricket, made possible again through the efforts of our friends in the People Republic of China and your Labour Party government. And of course, now your new national hospital. And we can spend the rest of the years speaking as to this national hospital. Let's not forget, okay, what the opposition have been saying. They said it was a political gimmick. They made calypso's about it, pie in the sky. But as I said, the hospital has landed, the one that was in the sky. And I'm pretty sure of you through the road in right now. And make no mistake about it, the very same people, and this is where sometimes we have to be very wise people in terms of how we make our political opinion, our political judgment. Some years ago, a few months ago, before actual work started, we saw the, what the PM referred to as enemies of progress, enemies of the state, posting all sorts of pictures about the old Princess Margaret Hospital. They go to the, for this corner where the garages and, you know, etc. And we make no apologies for this. The Princess Margaret Hospital is an old building people. It has made its time, which is why we have built in a national hospital. Now, in the spirit of being unbiased, why don't these very same people now post pictures of the tremendous work that is happening over there? They don't. Because the very same people who say they love their country and they claim themselves to be a government or whatever leaders in within, they are the very same people now portraying all sorts of negative images and stories on the internet and social media for their country, but they love their country. So the very same way they could post and try to make pictures of the, of the old hospital go viral, now that work has started and work is going along smoothly, apart from a few liberal administrative issues which we are dealing with, why don't they post pictures? And I'm sure all of you, all of you in Rosonov, would have seen the tremendous work that's going on by our Chinese friends. And I want to thank them for that. Of course, we, 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 I would have exhausted the discussion as to old side versus new side. Our thinking would have been to go to a new side, of course, it would have been the preference. But of course, the experts would have advised us based on, as I said, population, demographics, etc., that we should remain at the current side. And I'm sure the Honorable Tim Murphy and the Rosonov President would be very happy that the hospital remain in Rosonov. So in addition to this new building, which our Chinese friends have promised us that they're going to take thirty months to build. And as I say everywhere I go, at the, at the fear of saying, and this in our local counterparts, but the truth is the truth. If the Chinese tell you they're going to take forty months to deliver, they will deliver in twenty-nine months and twenty-nine days, unlike other people. So thirty months, we expecting to get our complete new state of the art hospital. However, because the hospital is going to be built on an active hospital site, it's going to be done in phases, which I'm sure you were aware of. Meaning that we now have to build a temporary building of what, two halls, whatever it is that we're going to move. Build a temporary building, demolish the old one. Build a permanent one, move back in, in seven different phases. So what you see happening right now will be phase one, which is the accident and emergency, what we call here in Dominica casualty. Okay, but the right medical term is accident and emergency department, which is a first building and offices upstairs. And the second building would be two halls, what they call our imaging and labs, etc. And not only are we going to have a brand new building, a building state of the art, but the project also comes with new equipment, including a much talked about, a much awaited MRI. A piece of equipment that never before in the history of Dominica, we will have available. I'm sure a number of you would have or would know somebody, relative, friend, okay, who would have had to travel to neighboring islands for an MRI, magnetic resonance imaging. No longer, all of this is going to be a thing of the past. In addition to the MRI, we also going to have another very important piece of equipment, what we call a high frequency laser ultrasound to treat tumors, cancers, etc. So we really want to thank our friends from China, first of all, for their cooperation, their patience and for this tremendous gift by any stretch of the imagination, one hundred and eight million dollars gift is quite a gift by any... So at the Ministry of Health, in addition to the new building, we are also undergoing some serious training of doctors, different specialists. And as we speak, we have a number of our young men and women, local doctors. And I'd like to say it for some of the nurses out there, local doctors that speak English, patwa and kookoi. So they will be able to better understand how people are being trained out there in new and exciting specialties. Because a lot of times, many of us would have had to travel overseas, for example, to see an nephrologist, to see an oncologist, etc. All of this is going to be a thing of the past. So we are putting a lot of this in place to ensure that not only are we going to have a brand new building and state of the art equipment, but also new services. So the need to travel will be less. But we say that in spite of all of this, the new building and new equipment and doctors and open doctors, all of this is going to be almost futile if each and every Dominican cannot access these services. So your government would have, over the past, I think for the past two or three months ago, would have embarked what they call on a national health insurance. And I want to tell you that this initiative of the government would have come under very high acclaim, not from Dominicans, from regional and international partners. Because many governments, including governments in the region, they will be talking decades now about national insurance. Or you have to take your hardworking and visionary leader and government to start a pilot program for health insurance. Where women thirty-five years and older and children three years and below will be covered in the first instance. So it's called a pilot program because we recognize there are a number of vulnerable groups out there. So we have been advised that this is the most vulnerable group. And the plan is that coming from this pilot program, we'll learn from whatever mistakes, do a little tweaking here, a little tweaking there. And we will gradually add other vulnerable groups until each and everybody is covered. Because we recognize that not very few of us can afford what they call the normal, the conventional medical insurance offered by insurance company like you want, Mr. Tim Murphy and others own. Okay, so recognizing that your government would have put this, would have put this in place to cover a lot of us who cannot afford this expensive medical insurance as offered by some of the companies. So we're not just about talk. So while a lot of other governments in the region, and I can tell you represent the Dominican number of regional and even international meetings, the talk is about universal health coverage. But nobody would have had the guts or the vision to implement it until your Labour Party administration did a couple of months ago. So, Mr. Prime Minister, I want to thank you for your, for your vision and for your support to help thus far. And even before the National Health Insurance Program, and again, Honorable Oshie spoke to the Public Support Program, I refer to as a red clinic. And I want to say that we make no apologies for the red clinic. And as a medical doctor, I can tell you even before I entered politics, that this facility within the offices of the Prime Minister would have assisted a number of our citizens. Otherwise, would have had no other ways to travel to receive this much needed assistance. So, Mr. Prime Minister, when you talk about the red clinic and talk about begging, you have to, you don't have to, you have nothing to be ashamed of. You, the people receiving the assistance from your government. Because we are democratic government meeting of the people, by the people, and also for the people. And you have to benefit, you have to benefit from the country's success and from the country's resources. So we make no regrets for assisting you and you in turn should have no shame or make no apologies, no explanation to anybody when your government reaches out to assist you. Tell them I said so. In addition, moving along quickly because we still have the Prime Minister, the featured speaker, I'm coming after that. Also, given this huge audience, I'm sure you're going to have lots of questions, etc. Also, also I'm on the cut is the construction of the new Marigot Hospital. And I really want to emphasize the new Marigot Hospital. So in spite of what you've been hearing now, especially from the Member of Parliament of Marigot, who happens to be the leader of the opposition. And every now and then, when he remembers, when he wants to make himself politically relevant, he latches on to the issue of the Marigot Health, Marigot Hospital. And I'm sure each and every one of you present here would have had a copy of the Labour Party Manifesto and you would have seen that this has always been in the plans of the Dominican Labour Party to build a new hospital in Marigot. Recognizing the strategic location of Marigot, close to the airport, etc., we know that we have to do a new hospital here. Over there, rather. Of course, we would have some issues over, over, over the years with termites, etc. But we are moving forward. And I want to tell the nation, those of you who would not have heard a few weeks ago, that the Mexican government would have committed fifteen million dollars into building this new hospital at Marigot. Again, again, because of the ability of your government to communicate with the government. And not only that, because of your, all the government's confidence in the management of Dominica. That is why, in spite of what they're saying, that we are country and, and etc., etc., governments and organizations continue to reach out to us to provide us with the resources to work for you. So in the next few months, we should see work continue, I'm sorry, begin towards the construction of the new Marigot Hospital. In addition to that, we are also going to build a type three health center in Marigot. Here we have one point five million dollars in this year's budget already allocated towards renovating the junior high school into a, a new type three health center in Marigot. And people, this is important because we need to understand that even after tropical storm Erika, which left us one point four billion, and I say billion, they want if the V, they want if the nine zeros, one point four billion dollars damage that your government, in fact, we have seen an exacerbation and increase in intensity in work for the everyday people in Dominica. This is commendable. And we've, and we've managed to do all of this without even asking the public servants for cutting pay. Without the public servants, sorry, ever being late. Without increasing taxes. So we ask ourselves, how has this government managed to do all of this without additional taxes, etc.? And of course, speakers before me spoke to the CBI, which is why we see them frothing and forming a mouth trying to destroy the CBI, which is a, which is a solid source of revenue for your government to be able to work for you, the everyday citizens of Dominica. So I know that we're in the Rosonov constituency, a very um religious community. You pray a lot. So I wanted to continue to pray for your government. I wanted to pray for your Prime Minister and to pray for the continued success of the CBI program. Because without this CBI program, all of this wonderful initiative that we undertaken, and the community roads, the Yes UK program, the over seventy law want, and all of this, all of this would ki bush, as we say in local language. All of this would come to a grinding halt without this sort of funding, the CBI program. So in spite of the attempts in winding up, to allow, as I said, the Prime Minister to, to speak to you, in winding up, in spite of the efforts to derail this government, in spite of the efforts to derail the Prime Minister, I think the efforts have got this cabinet much, much closer together, Mr. Prime Minister. Because we have shown them that unlike them, that we are not fair weathered friends. We stick together even when the going gets tough. And Mr. Prime Minister, I'm pretty sure by now that you would know that you have the support of each and every member of cabinet. And I really want to thank my colleagues for supporting the PM, for supporting the Prime Minister even when attacks continue, continue to, to be directed at him day after day. So as I said, let's pray for the CBI program. I told my people from Pidgin Servant, I'm sure there are a few of them maybe there because since, since Erika, they've been scattered all over, all over the place. So I'm sure there might be one or two of them in the audience that they shouldn't follow Lennox Fenton and the rest of his crew talking Betis as it's in pattern. Betis is a pattern of nonsense. Because the very continuation and success of the relocation of Pidgin, of the Pidgin Servant Committee depends, is hinged on the success of the CBI. Because this is a program that is going to cost well over one hundred million dollars. Without the government having to come up upfront with that sort of money. So one hundred million dollars. So when they hear the opposition talking nonsense, the handful of supporters that they have in the constituency of Pidgin Servant, they need to understand what is it that they're doing. Because this pro, this project, sorry, being completed successfully is going to depend on the success and contention of the CBI. So I really want to thank you for listening to me and to, as I said, to continue to support your caretaker. I heard, I heard a lot of calls from Miriam. So I'm not sure if she has been the designated caretaker. But, but she may in a resident of Rosonov. I just want to tell you that she's doing a tremendous job in representing your native cabinet. Even without she having been, been elected. And I have no doubt that on completion of all of these wonderful projects that we have geared up for the Rosonov constituency, that whenever the trumpet is sounded next time, that you would have recognized your mistakes pointed by Reginald Oshie and you would have, you would make amends and come back home to where you belong. I thank you very much.
Would like to, all of you, the wonderful people of Rosonov constituency. I want also to recognize our friend, His Excellency Julius Timothy. I think I should recognize my friends and colleagues on the branch who are minister for public works. Who I thought had a very brilliant presentation tonight. Also, the Honorable Divine Peter Tilly General. Honorable Oshie. My wife who is present and to all my colleagues who are here in big number. The President and the members of the Executive and all the wonderful people. Very happy to be here tonight. And though this constituency, the Labour Party does not represent it in parliament, but this government is a government for everybody. And I have said to people and I've said to the country that as Prime Minister of Dominica, I do not see problems. People come to me for assistance, I do not ask them, who did you vote for? Because this party, this government is different from the rest. And I'm saying to you here, the residents of Rosonov, irrespective of who you are, whether you supported Labour or you did not, that this Labour Party administration and its leadership have your back. And if your family is in distress and you believe that the government can help, vote to your government for help. And I will say to you, I will say to you, I am not here tonight to campaign. I am not here tonight to ask for votes. I am here tonight to engage ourselves in a discussion about your welfare. about your welfare, the welfare of your families, the welfare of Rosaloff and the welfare of our country, Dominica. We are here as a responsible and mature government to report to you on that which we are doing for Dominica and that which we are doing for the people of the Rosaloff constituency. And very importantly, we are also here to hear from you as to what are the things you can do together to make life better for you in Rosaloff. And we were in Bulug last night. This afternoon at four thirty, up until after six, I was in Newtown. I went there to meet some young boys on the block. But when I got to the meeting room, the place was packed with people. People in these constituencies, the constituencies which do not vote my party into, into Parliament are begging for representation. They are begging for representation. And even in Marigot, people are sending messages to me, when is our town hall meeting? They're asking for a town hall meeting. And I'm saying to them, tonight in Rosaloff, that your town hall in Marigot is coming soon. Because they are not getting the kind of representation which they hoped they would have gotten from the people who they elected. My friends, let me tell you something. When you look, and I, and I, and I cautioned Dominicans back in two thousand fourteen, when you look at the list of candidates on the Dominica Labour Party side, they were all leaving a job to come to represent you in Parliament. They were all resigning from their jobs, losing their pensions and gratuity to come to represent you. When you look at those who contested for the Workers' Party, they had no jobs. No jobs. And they were looking for jobs. My friends, anytime you see that happening in politics, these people will be bang representative. And you know, you know, the Bible says, the God, God give and God take away, bless me the Lord. And you know, sometimes I reflect and I say, well, thank God that Rosaloff and Rosell South and Rosell Central went to it already. Because people, even the people who voted for them are saying they're wasting their vote and it's time for a election to come to vote for you, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, I, I do not profess to be the busiest person in Dominica. But I mean, I will be one of the people in the country who has the greatest responsibility. And on top of me having to run a political party, be responsible for Parliament, be responsible for the whole government, and still have a young family, young children, and going out to all of these villages and communities and meeting people one-on-one or in a town hall setting. You know, what is, what is preventing Hector John, Hector Sparks John from going and do some farming and produce something and make a better way for himself? Instead, instead, he is outside the financial center by himself, you know, the card. And I'm not even sure that he can read properly outside if he has a center. So, my dear brothers and sisters, my dear brothers and sisters, you must take, we in Dominica must take our lives and the, and the future of our children seriously. When we are about to make decisions and to take decisions, we must ponder upon it very carefully. Because any action we should take will have a negative impact on our families. And when it comes to representation, that is a serious responsibility. It's a serious thing. You cannot vote based on emotion. You have to look at it objectively and determine who are the best people to represent you, to represent you. And I feel very bad for so many people who voted in the Workers' Party in Rosaloff. Because some of them come to me and they say, the Prime Minister, I did not vote for your party last election. I said, Darren, that's okay. And so I said, but, but have you been to your parliament? Prime Minister, we can, we don't see him. And, and when we try to vote by the zone, the person who is inside the tent is, don't come in there. The person in the house telling them, if anyone wants to sit down, you have to outside, you know, if I, that's very good. So, I said, I'm not here to campaign, I'm not here to ask for votes, my friends. But we will, we will work with you. We will work with you to help make life better for you, the residents of Rosaloff. Let us work together. Let us put aside our political differences or different views and recognize that if you work in the government, life can be better for every one of us living in Rosaloff. Because I was telling the Minister and the Cabinet this week that when I look at the maps, we are spending more money on roads in Rosaloff than my own constituency. But we recognize that the investments we are making, you deserve it and you made, and you, and you need it. So, we are committing to that, ladies and gentlemen, notwithstanding the fact that we do not represent you in the Parliament. So, tonight, I want to make some commitments to you. Tonight, I make a commitment for Rosaloff of half a million dollars for small business assistance. Also, also, we're making a commitment of some fifteen washrooms at a cost of five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And I have said to the Minister, I have said to Minister Austrie, that as early as next week, I want us to send the housing officers from the Ministry of Housing to do proper assessments for you, the residents of Rosaloff, so you can help improve the housing condition. And I do not want, I do not want the assessment to discriminate against people. We're coming to help the people of Rosaloff, those of you who reside in Rosaloff, ladies and gentlemen. We're also making a commitment for the foreign roads in the Rosaloff constituency. Jolly lip, Winston lip, Mazutskar. There's, I drove to Stock Farm last week Wednesday and they rose to Stock Farm a very bad. And so, we are committing to one road in Stock Farm. And there's also the road where we build petrol cars. We're, we're committing to constructing that road. You know, you may not see me, but I have been in Rosaloff more than Danny Logan, your partner, in Dominica. And I have been to every part in Mondaniel and the roads up there are terrible, you know. So, we'll be doing the first phase of the road from where the Chinese residence is all the way up to the heights. We did the first phase from the George's Residence in, in Mondaniel, just past Mrs. Jackson's House in Mondaniel as the first phase, ladies and gentlemen. And once we, once we complete that, we will take it up to this last house on the top of the mountain in Mondaniel. And of course, we'll continue the road program in that constituency. The Rosaloff, the Google Primary School has made representation to us about the, the yard and the need to upgrade the yard and to improve the safety for our street children. And we have an estimate of over a hundred thousand dollars. And so, that will be done. I'm saying to the principal and the staff and the parents and the children that we will concrete the act to make it safe and playable for children who attend the Google Primary School, ladies and gentlemen. There are lots of families, especially single mothers. And caring for children is an expensive venture. And sometimes, you know, the men get vexed if they become, I tell them, we have to take care of our children. And there are lots of single mothers who have to take care of their children by themselves. And, you know, as life progressed and so forth, people no longer use diapers. Diapers is for sixties and so on. Now it's pampas and so on, all these things. And wipes and, and, and powder and all these things. Going on days when you had two or three diapers and one went dirty, you wash it and you use it again. But that's life progress, we make progress. So, I don't expect families to be using diapers today and besides that, diapers could bring in some, some, some infections to the children. In the budget coming up, in the budget coming up, we will go to Parliament and put in a special allowance for mothers with babies in Dominica. So that your baby does not have, will not have a diaper for the whole day and you do not want to change it because you only have one left. So, you wait for the night to come to use it and you're chewing in rashes and, and all this marks, ladies and gentlemen. So, we will give you a launch so you can properly provide some of the basic things for your babies and let them live healthy and decent life. So, that will include in this year's budget, ladies and gentlemen. Doctor Darrell, Doctor Darrell and, and Honorable Austrie spoke about the Red Clinic. Now, let me tell you something. I always think, I always think that the government has a Christian and biblical responsibility to look after the less fortunate ones. And let me tell you honestly, my friends, that all of these social programs that we have instituted in Dominica, none of them were really implemented or instituted to catch votes. For me, it is an ideological stance, it's a principle stance, it is a biblical and Christian responsibility. Because if we say that we are a Christian society, we go to church and we pray, hallelujah, and we speak in tongues and all these things. And never do you hear church leaders criticizing the government for looking after the less fortunate. And I'm saying to myself, I'm saying to myself, are we really, is there a new Bible, is there, is there a new Christianity, is there, that people are setting aside the interpretation of the Bible and, and looking at colors? So, when they read the Bible, they say blue. We have to help the less fortunate. If somebody comes to me as the Prime Minister and that lady is suffering from cancer, she has to do a surgery, she has to go overseas and she needs ten thousand US dollars, what do I say to that person? That go home and pray and, and something will happen? I believe, I believe that a good Lord has placed me there to help people and that's what I will do, ladies and gentlemen. And I said, I said to those, I said to those who do not want to vote me because of that, keep your vote. I said to those who do not like me because of that, then thank God you don't like me because of that, ladies and gentlemen. But I will say to you, I will say to you that when you criticize this program, rest assured, you are not criticizing Roosevelt's theory, you're criticizing the other one. Because the Bible says that the least that you do want, my brother, you do it want to do. So, whatever we do, we do it for the Lord, my friends. That's what it is. That's what it is. And what really gets me sometimes, upset with people in this country, is that sometimes the people who are criticizing these programs, they themselves in one time, one, one support time in their life, they got assistance from government. But, you know, life, my friends, is a funny thing. Today you're well, you get up tonight you sick. Today you're in a big position, tomorrow you want auto job. You may have pretty money in the bank, something happens, you have to use everything. So, you come from a rich man to a poor man. And the question is, when do you come from where you are, don't, how would you like people to treat you? So, I know, I know, and I feel confident that if tomorrow comes for me, I get old and I don't want to care for me, there'll be a history care program to provide care for me, ladies and gentlemen. That's what it is. You know, how, how can you criticize, how can you criticize the government sending somebody to an eighty-five-year-old home to break her and to make her hair, to cut her fingernails and toenails and to get the vaccine and pass on her feet and to powder her and to put her on foot for her, to make her bed? How can you make that political? But you know, you have a few, you have, you have few bourgeois Dominicans who don't like me because they say I spend too much money on poor people in Dominica. You know? So, let us work together to make life better for you, the residents of Rosaloff and Dominica. And the history care program, the, sorry, the public support program has been making wonders for the people of Dominica. And without that program, we would have seen many people dying and suffering. And this year, this year, ladies and gentlemen, we have spent in the public support program twelve million dollars helping Dominica. Twelve million dollars. You know, somebody dies, we, we have irrespective of who the person is, we must bury the person with, with pride. You know, I have an old friend who was with Carolina Territory, she lived in Bell, she died, she had no children, no mother, nobody, nobody for her. She was under the history care program, you know, body development center, they will say that she was part of the history care program. What should I do? Tell them to, tell the people of Bell to take a white cloth and, and wrap her up in a good clothing, hold? No, no, we have to give her a decent burial and the government will bury my friend from Bell. You know, that's what it is. And this people criticizing that, you see, my friend, to represent people, you must first love them. You must love people to represent them because politics and representation is about people, ladies and gentlemen. About people, about, about understanding the suffering of people and to see how you can make life better for them and their family. That's what representation is about. Making life better for people and if you do not love people, if you believe that you're the only one living in the world, you arrogant. Arrogance, there is no place for arrogance in politics. Humanity and respect and love and compassion must be on the order of the day in representing people. And that is what the Labour Party has in abundance. Compassion and love for people irrespective of who you are, ladies and gentlemen. So we are committing to the New National Hospital. This is going to help transform the delivery of healthcare in Dominica. And really, our vision for healthcare, ladies and gentlemen, is for us to see a country where we would stay here and we afforded the best medical services and care right in our country. And we do not, why should we in the second decade or twenty-first century have to leave our country and go and get an MRI somewhere else, ladies and gentlemen? That has to stop and come by the end of two thousand and seventeen, Dominicans will not have to go overseas to get an MRI done, you will be right there at the Princess Bank Hospital or the New National Hospital, ladies and gentlemen. And that's what we're seeking to achieve for you here in Dominica. Because for the vast majority of us, the only facility we will have access to medical care will be the hospital. There will be some who can go overseas, praise God to them. But the vast majority of us will have to remain here and getting medical care. So we want to ensure that you have what is it that is required here in Dominica and it must be affordable and accessible. And that's what we're doing. Astrid told about the state college. When he came into office, only seven percent of high school graduates had access to the college. Seven percent. Which meant that ninety-three percent of us never had access to college. Not because we did not pass the C X E, but because the system was accepting a certain number of students. And today, because of the investments we have made in the state college, we have allowed for one hundred percent access to college in Dominica. So any student, irrespective of who you are, where you come from, what's your family name, you have a space waiting for you at the college once you meet the minimum requirements of entry. And I want you to take advantage of this. We will build the indoor sports facility, ladies and gentlemen. We will build it because the youth of Dominica must be afforded access to international standard facilities. So we can see the host of international games here in Dominica for volleyball, for basketball, for netball and to ensure all young people can go there and take advantage of the many opportunities that are available in sports, ladies and gentlemen. So we're committing to building this. And I can tell you that this Labour Party will be an international airport for Dominica. And I can tell you that I have started to raise the money to build an international airport for Dominica. So we are making progress. We are making progress and we will thank the good Lord for always blessing us with opportunities and the resources we need to do what we have to do for the people of Dominica. And this is why, ladies and gentlemen, the opposition has been colluding with foreign agents to destroy the CBI. To destroy the CBI. All of the projects I have committed here, whether it's small business, the washrooms, the roads, all of these monies will come from the CBI once, every single dollar. When Astrid gets the housing assessment and we are to fix the homes, all of the money will come from the CBI. The twelve million dollars which we spent in the public service program, most of it was to send people overseas for medical care. All of the twelve million dollars came from the CBI. So understand, ladies and gentlemen, that when these men and women are attacking and seeking to destroy the CBI, they are seeking to take bread from your mouth, not able to give you peace, ladies and gentlemen. Understand that Dominica is about to scale, you know, is about destroying your opportunities. It's about you, whether in red, blue or whatever it is, we are all Dominicans and when the road is fixed to go to Stock Farm, all of us in Stock Farm will drive on it. When it's back, all of us will mash our beakles and break our legs and spread our ankles on this road. So not only liberals enjoying the roads, not only liberals enjoying the state college, not only liberals enjoying the New National Hospital, every single Dominican, one day, whether you or your relatives or your children, will use the P N X. They will curse China. They will curse China. A country that has been good to us for the last thirty years. Not once have you heard the leadership of the Communist Party say they support China, they support the China policy. Not once because they're still trying to get some money from Taiwan. Setting aside the well-being of Dominica for their own personal short-term political gain. That's not what we are about, ladies and gentlemen. We are about serious business, working for you, working with you to make life better for you and your families. I'll give you a classic example because you don't have to be in government. You don't have to be in government. You don't have to be in government to help people. The same way they could have raised money for Lennox Linton to pay for his big mouth. It is the same way they would raise money to help the people of Yambis and Grotta and to help the single mothers. Tell me, the single mothers of this Rosalov, can you tell me what a hundred thousand would do for your families? But instead, they'll have regular fun, not for one innocent, not for one of your children in box, but to pay for a man who doesn't understand what it is to shove his mouth and speak truth, ladies and gentlemen. Because Labour was the forest government. Labour spent twenty years in opposition. But when we were in opposition, ladies and gentlemen, we would go to parliament, Mike Douglas and Rosie, they always would go to parliament, Petros, and banter these shouts. But always did so with respect, but never did Labour Party try to destroy Dominica. When Rosie went out and Mike went off, it was to promote the good of Dominica. And what is great and popular of Dominica, never to destroy our country, never to speak bad of our country, never. Rosie went overseas to get scholarships and brought back for poor students to become doctors and architects today. Show them all grateful to heaven for getting what Rosie and Rosie have achieved. In opposition, Petros had, had preschool in Grotte, teaching people to read and write. Community projects, building roads. We built roads in opposition, we built schools in opposition. Rosie should bring a doctor called Mark Hook from Guadalupe and come to people's homes and to check them and to bring medication for them free of charge. That's what we did in opposition for the people of Dominica. We would have cultural activities, we'd dress people in African wear and have models, modeling all over Rosalov. We would bring people from Guadalupe and Martin can have fat, Guatas. Bringing in tourists into Dominica in opposition. I have never, I am a student of politics. I've been following politics for a long time, even before I could vote, I was part of the political structure. And I've never seen a bunch of wasted time, lazy, belligerent, useless people in Dominica. Never. I know it's late and we have to go to bed and let it sleep. But I want to say to you, and I am, I'm inviting volunteers. The Labour Party, let's check this out. The Labour Party has decided that we're going to do some voluntary work. And so we will be doing a section of the road in the gardens. The road is section we're going down to where the health center is. And this voluntary project will not cost the government of Dominica one cent. The estimate for that project, for that section is three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. And what we have done, we've called it private sector. We've called builders, skilled laborers. And we say, come, let us work, you have a backhoe, come and help us, you have a bobcat, come and help us, you have a concrete trap, you have stolen a concrete, and let us come and do that road. So on Saturday morning, I want all of you to come and help us from seven o'clock in the gardens to help build that road. The Dominica Labour Party will be volunteering for the health of many factors in Dominica to build this road that will benefit the students attending the, the Convent High School, the Convent Prep and for all senior citizens who are using the health center in the gardens. So come and help us, whether you can walk a shovel, you can carry a bucket of water, come and help us on seven o'clock on Saturday to complete that road, ladies and gentlemen. And just imagine, ladies and gentlemen, that I will be there myself. You know, I will be there myself because we recognize that we have to make our contribution at all levels. So what is preventing somebody like Danny Lukeya from doing a little voluntary work inside Rosalov? So, but the final point I want to make to you and to show you and to demonstrate to you the naked lights of the opposition in Dominica. And it is trying to explain to you. We're going to parliament to amend the laws. Now, you recall the European Union to demonstrate for the IPO to be enacted. When you put an IPO, in effect, they don't want it. This guy's tactic is to criticize something with the hope that it will never be implemented so they can talk about something. So they said, no election without electoral reform. No electoral reforming, they want to demonstrate against the changes to the law to give effect to electoral reform, ladies and gentlemen. But I'll tell you how dishonest these people are. They went to the bill and they selected a clause, clause fifty-seven B. And what they did was that they selected a part of fifty-seven B and put a full stop period in it and left on the part, the second half. So I'll read to you one of the things, ladies and gentlemen. They say, the, the bill says, for the avoidance of doubt, the transportation of electors or the facilitation of the transportation of electors to or within Dominica for the purposes of an election does not constitute an offense. And in the clause there, they put a full stop there. But the clause goes on, the clause goes on to say, unless, unless it has a proviso, unless the transportation is provided or facilitated with the intention to correctly induce an elector to vote for a particular candidate for whom or a party for which the elector would not otherwise vote. That is what the clause says. But if you end it at offense, it will have a different meaning. But the, the clause goes on to have a proviso. Unless, and it tells you what unless is. But they leave that out and they go Q ninety-five and they go on the internet and some of the western people in the extreme and some of the people that they're using in Dominica on the ignorance are taking this and running with it without reading for themselves and informing themselves. And so we have to guard against misinformation, we have to guard against the tactics of Lennox Linton. Because I told Dominicans during the two thousand and fourteen election that the most dangerous person to Dominica is Lennox Linton, ladies and gentlemen. He is a disaster and, and, and anyone you speak to, you know, the supporters, they tell him on the web, Mrs Alloster, you know. Understand? And that is why even Joshua Francis want to take over Linton, Linton and be the leader. And even Joseph Isaac want to be the leader. Take him out. So there is a big fight now. And anyone say, well, if I'm in a fight, I come back and take my thing. So, my friends in Rosalov, thank you very much for telling us and to let Rosalov know and to let Dominica know and to let the world know that the Rosalov constituency is appreciative of what this Labour Party government is doing for Dominica and for the people of Dominica. And I give you the assurance that this government will keep to its promises. Because we have to help you, the people of this country. We have to make life better for all of you who continue to struggle in one way or the other. We have to make life better for you and by working together, by respecting each other, we can make a huge difference in your lives, the lives of your family and this country of ours, Dominica. God bless you. Thank you very much.